Party to Warwickshire County Council Cabinet today, the 28th of January. Heavens above, we've been nearly been a full year in this lockdown and it we will have been a full year by the sounds of it. So, however, we've got very used, I think, to doing all these online meetings and for the benefit of those who are joining us as guests and will be speaking, if I can ask members to raise their hands, which is the Raise Hand facility if they want to come in. The chat facility is there, but really for the benefit of those who are watching us online, it would be much better if we don't use the chat facility because it does appear as if there's a separate meeting going on. So it's better to do it by raising hands and inviting people to come in. We have got two public speakers today, but I will come to that in a minute. So the first thing I want to do is ask if we have any apologies. Paul, I wonder if you can help us
Yes, I haven't received any apologies, Chair.
I'm not aware of any either. Does anyone else want to identify any apologies? Now's your moment and you've missed it. So there are no apologies. We will move on then to the minutes of the previous meeting and these are in pages seven to 16. And what I'd like to do is ask if we can agree those minutes as printed. Can I ask cabinet members to raise their hands to that? I think, are we all there? Oh, we are. Thank you very much. Well done, Colin. Despite all the technical difficulties, we did get you. Paul?
Chair, can I just ask you to request any declarations of interest, please?
Yes. Have I missed that one? Yes, I did sort of. Yes. Can I then ask if there are any matters that people would like to identify? Any pecuniary or non pecuniary interest that should be declared now? Peter? No, no, that was a late hand. There are none, Paul. So, right, so we will move on to the next item, which is public speakers. We have two today. Richard, Richard Dixon, who's with us from Kenilworth. And after Richard, we will have Michelle Condarco, who is with us from Nuneaton. Richard, I believe you want to speak on item K to L Cycleway.
I did.
Please do start. You have three minutes, I believe, here.
Well, thank you, Chair, and thank you, councillors, for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today about item 11 on your agenda, namely the Kenilworth to Leamington cycle route. If I may, I want to do one thing today. That's simply to welcome the report brought forward by councillor Clark and county council staff and to welcome the authority it gives to county councils' strategic directors. I speak as a local resident and occasional cyclist. I'm not a lycra man. By nature, I'm lazy and opt for the car. But this makes me primed target audience for K to L, an audience whose behaviour needs to be nudged into choosing a more active and healthy form of travel, a form of travel that's so ripe for our response to the climate change emergency. Yes, I have cycled from Kenilworth to Leamington along the A452. It was in 2019 before Covid. I don't know if any of the cabinet members here today have recently cycled the road. It's a dangerous experience. You're close to fast vehicles as they overtake you. You're on a narrow, broken road surface near the curb, or on a slippery footpath that is sometimes very narrow, thoroughly unsafe. Starting building work on the K to L route is long overdue. It was way back in the 2006 Warwickshire Local Transport Plan that there was formal support for the idea. This is the fourth successive administration that's had the chance to do something about K to L. It's been like that perennial question asked by children in the back of the car, are we there yet? So assuming that cabinet members approve the plans today, it seems the right time to acknowledge the work done to champion K to L over more than 30 years by people like councillor Bill Gifford from Milverton and former councillors John Whitehouse and Margaret Beg, as well as the work of community groups like Cycleways and the Kenilworth Cycling Forum. Now, I know I'm from Kenilworth and that the cycle route is called K to L, but please, I urge you not to see K to L as primarily for Kenilworth residents. Why it's called K to L and not L to K, I don't know. What I do know is that K to L is going to be of huge benefit to people in Leamington, Whitnash, Lillington and Covington, and also students getting to and from Warwick University. It will be great for local tourism too. The Shakespeare's England Agency can use it as yet another reason to attract people to visit our area, and Kenilworth welcomes visitors. Finally, can I remind cabinet members that words matter, in this case, two very short words in the first paragraph of the recommendation before you. The two words are all steps. From today, the time for yet more delay, procrastination and uncertainty is over. This proposal to complete K to L by the end of 2023 is very welcome.
Thank you.
Now, if I may, please, can I urge you just to get on with it? Thank you very much.
Indeed, that is why it is here. Thank you very much, Richard. And the next member of the public who is speaking, thank you, Michelle, Michelle Condarco, who is going to be speaking on the Bermuda connectivity item. Michelle, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I was actually, I did actually ask to speak on four and nine, but they should have
Well, you have three minutes to speak on whatever items, but three minutes altogether.
Okay, right. On the Covid recovery plan, obviously, it is terribly difficult. There's so many things that need, you know, doing, what have you and things. But I'm very concerned about that it's not, that it's actually enhanced the inequalities, particularly, you know, the poorer areas of Nuneaton and what have you. So I would have liked to have seen a little bit more about how you were going to actually tackle. It ties in with also climate change and all the good words in there about sustainability, growth, sustainable transport and things. There are so many things that need doing. And that kind of, Bermuda Bridge, it's such a complete waste and it's such a shame because that is the absolute, one of the most prestigious routes for getting from the town centre, from various parts of Nuneaton to Stockingford and the west of Nuneaton and things. And it's been wasted. It should be a cycling and pedestrian route. I've never been across there and not seen someone else, you know, crossing across that route. The costs are really concerning. Yeah, I don't think any of you can possibly watch the programme Grand Designs. People never put enough contingency in and there's just not enough contingency being built into this. And, you know, feedback after feedback. On your website, Moorish County Council website, feedback from the 20th of September 18, 64% of the respondents do not support the proposed new highway link via Bermuda Bridge. This is a similar outcome to the original consultation carried out during the preliminary design stage in 2015. So I don't know why we're actually pursuing that. It's against the, all the things for helping climate change, for encouraging sustainability, sustainable transport, tackling inequalities. If there's a good cycle route, everyone cycles, then it doesn't matter whether you're rich or poor. You're not singled out because you haven't got a car. Things. I'm just flabbergasted that time after time, despite all the things from the consultations, that it's still going forward. Things. Another thing said it was, you know, less mitigation for local impact along the route and things. 1.7 million pounds for noise compensation. And then you'd have the audacity to say that it has, you know, it's good scoring on the environmental impacts. It's just unbelievable. Please stop it and actually put all that money into sustainability and a proper sustainable route that will encourage cycling and make it better for everyone.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Thank you to both our speakers for attending today. And obviously, you are more than welcome to stay on and I'm sure you will want to stay on for our agenda. But this is a closed meeting from here on. We've had the public speaking time. So thank you for your input at this point. Right, we now move to our full agenda. And the first item on that is item two, which is the 2020-2021 Quarter Three Budget Monitoring Report. I'm going to move to Peter to introduce this. Peter?
Thank you, Chair. This is the Quarter Three Budget Monitoring Report, the last one before we set the budget on the February the 8th. The main points, I'm going to assume most people have read it, although it's quite a lengthy document, is that we had an underspend of 11.4 million in quarter two. But once this was adjusted for Covid grants and other adjustments to that budget, it resulted in a kind of an overspend, underspend of 9.3 million. When you kind of rolled this together with the quarter two, this results in a kind of an overspend, underspend of 11.5 million. This will be put into reserves. From those reserves, we've already allocated 43 million, which will go into the forthcoming NTFS, which will be announced on the 8th. And it will leave then, once we've done that, it will leave a final reserve for contingencies, 4 million for a general underspend, bringing 1 million of Covid funding, which is unallocated, which will be there to basically deal with anything that the Covid crisis is going to throw up on us in the near future. On paragraph 2 to 10, there is a fund that's been created for academisations. Now, when a school goes into an academy, and if there's any deficits, we have to pick up those deficits before they become academies. So for those transformation processes, we've put 2.137 million into kind of a, into a reserve to kind of account for anything that might come our way in that respect. In terms of the capital schemes, there is a slippage for obvious reasons because of the Covid crisis, which has kind of caused an enormous amount of problems for contractors in terms of being Covid, Covid secure. So the whole process is being slowed down as a result. I must point out, of the 32.1 million slippage, 10 million of it relates to two 78 schemes, which are developer schemes, which are also experiencing the same problems that we are in terms of the Covid crisis. So that explains that element of it. And the other one, I think I've mentioned, oh, yeah, this is kind of a strange one really, but as you know, we kind of set a budget last year with savings programmes. And because of the crisis that came on 25th of March onwards, some of the savings that was kind of forecast for on that budget last year have not been achieved. But that's kind of understandable when you consider what we had to go through in the last time months and that. Those savings not achieved is 2.581 million. They are the basic points, as pointed out in the papers, and I'm willing to answer any questions.
Thank you, Peter. I've got three speakers at the moment. I'll take them first and perhaps come back to you, Peter, afterwards. So Helen Adkins first, then Keith Condarco and Gerry.
Thanks, Izzy. Thanks, Peter, for that. You know what I'm going to talk about is the forced academisation. When I see that phrase, I think, gosh, that's just an awful situation to be in, isn't it, for a school who perhaps wants to stay at a maintained school but then are forced because of deficits that are crude, perhaps for no fault of their own, and they're forced into academisation. We saw that at Trinity School. I know that we need to mitigate against that 1 million pounds worth of deficit that Trinity had. But I'm just wondering, the extra 1.7, so Peter said there's 2.1, did you say 2.17 or 2.7?
It's 2.137.
2.137, sorry. So the extra 1.137, is that planned for any other schools that we are, we are thinking maybe in the same position that would be forced into academisation in the future? If so, which of those schools? It would be, it would be better if we could support schools before they get into a financial deficit so that they're actually forced into academisation. But I realise we're restricted into how we use the DSG for that. I realise that. But it is a sorry situation where we are having to mop up the fact that the government is underfunding schools. Thank you.
So Helen, just on that point, we do support schools, not financially because we're not able to, but what we do is put in a lot of support around helping them to budget and to manage that situation. So we certainly put all the help that we can into it and that's through the Education Department. And there's a lot of help goes in on the financial administration at any point. So yet, yes, we do do that. And to my knowledge, I think the academisation generally, my understanding is that secondaries have chosen to go into academies, become academies. They have got more money to do that and that has been their choice. And we've always encouraged them to stay when they can as the family of Warwickshire schools. But, you know, there have been, you know, pots of rain, pots of money at the end of the rainbow around this and, you know, many have chosen that. Of course, you know, a single pot of money isn't quite the same as a long term revenue support. But we do help and support them.
I appreciate, if I could just come back on that. I appreciate that, that we do support them. It's just sad that we have no other way of supporting them financially because of the way the funding works. And I think schools, I think that schools that have been forced into academisation, some of them don't want that to happen. It's not necessarily always a choice.
Thank you. Keith, can I move to you, please?
Thank you very much, Chair. We've really noticed the highway issues over the last six months. And even today, I did my legal exercise for 38 minutes and the roads are breaking up with the weather. We're really late on our delegated budget stuff, you know, the little jobs the councillors have funding to do. The traffic surveys still haven't been done for my went and crossing. And a lot of the roads are in a really bad state. So this sort of deficit and capital slippage has really been, come very visible now I've had winter pressures. And particularly, I mean, just on Geoff's part, perhaps the old Hinkley Road, yeah, it desperately needed doing some time ago. So I do hope we have a catch up in this budget to actually not just run Belfer BT, but someone else with Belfer BT count catches up so we can put our roads in a decent state.
Thank you, Keith. Gerry? I think, by the way, Keith, Geoff has put his hand up. I know he's going to respond to you. Gerry?
Yes, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, the academisation thing, you know, well, you know, my view, we should have had academies. So, you know, we are, we've got these battalions of little schools everywhere or big schools. And I think it is sorry sad fact that we've got to create a reserve actually to help out doing that side of it. And of course, the risk is, is if academies go down or get into particular troubles, we have to pick up the bill as well, which is great. So page 38 of the report is talked about the other key points. And I am noting the mental health pressures here that are coming out and are increasing as we go through. And I think also there's the extra pressure on domiciliary and residential care packages as well. And I'll talk a bit more probably in the next item around some of that. But I do think that the risks that are building up certainly around mental health going forward and around residential and domiciliary care are quite massive. And we don't really fully understand what those costs are going to be. And I recognise that this is just, if you like, a standstill telling us where we're at. But it is something I think which is quite cause for concern, I think, that we need around that. And we potentially need to do some support.
Gerry, thank you very much. And then I have Dave Parsons.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm sorry, Peter, but I'm going to dwell on academies too. The, if I've got it right, if I remember rightly, when academisation takes place, the land and the holdings and the buildings are all transferred to the academy trust on a, on a long term lease, if I remember rightly. And so, in a sense, the county loses out in this, this very real possession, as it were. I think at the time, when academies were launched, it was described as the biggest land grab since the dissolution of the monasteries. And that's happening. And of course, if, if indeed an academy does go down, or indeed we run into the situation which we had sort of 20 years ago, where actually there were surplus places and schools were being closed as a result of that, I wonder what then happens to this asset that has been taken away from the county?
Dave, if we can keep to this agenda item, to that, happy to talk about academies within that.
Yes, I'm just, the question is, what happens to that possession if indeed an academy goes down?
Thank you. And I am now looking at Geoff Clark. I think you might want to respond to Keith.
Couple of points I'd like to pick up, leader. Thank you very much for that. First of all, and just to manage, in relation to Mr Dixon's comments earlier, in relation to K to L.
That is on the agenda later.
It is, but it is also referred to in this document as well. And that's what I'm referring to here is the fact that we do have a delay due to the complexities, got my tongue around it, of land acquisitions, just to manage expectations around that aspect, leader. But the two points I wanted to pick up on at this point are the ones that councillor Condarco raised. First of all, the Hinkley Road, yes, there is a survey being done on the old Hinkley Road. I am fully aware of that, as are the officers. It is something of a concern to many residents and to myself. So that survey is being done. Hopefully, we can try and get that brought into a programme to ensure that's covered sooner rather than later. In relation to councillor Condarco's specific issue in his own area, the pedestrian crossing signals, you will recall that we agreed to undertake a survey in this financial year. It was hoped to start at the early, early part of the financial year. Obviously, with the schools not going back, that wasn't able to be done. So that's why the delays come about in relation to the, to the investigation and the survey on that and hopefully, potentially a delivery of signals in that area. So there are reasons why those issues are outstanding, leader, and that's, that's the situation. Thank you.
Can I just clarify, Chair, that it will get carried over to the next financial year? Because normally, these things get lost if they get delayed too much.
Geoff?
Yeah, I have every intention to carry, to carry that through, as with other projects. And you mentioned slippage on some of the member delegated budgets. As councillor Condarco will recall, that was raised back in 2018. It's now been through overview and scrutiny. There's been a change in the process, process, which starts in this financial year, April this year, which will hopefully address the concerns and any potential delays arising from the delivery of those projects that members want to see in their own areas. Thank you, Chair.
I would also point out some of the immediate delays that there may have been on repairs have been around Covid and getting teams working closely together. And I think, Keith, you know that as well. So I'm now moving then back to you, Peter, on this to take us through those points.
Thank you, Chair. On academisation, obviously, kind of, it's a very emotive subject to some of the people who have spoken. But I must point out, this is just the funding that we have to put in place as a reserve to basically on transference. When we transfer from ourselves to an academy, we have to pick up the bill between the two. And that's what this relates to. Whether or not academised schools then have financial difficulties afterwards, as we've stated before and plainly stated before, we do not bail them out. We help them in terms of materially and other ways, but we do not kind of pick up those bills and neither do we make provision for it. The highways maintenance, which Keith was referring to, is not a part of this slippage. Highway maintenance is something that happens all the way through the year. And, and as anybody knows, mostly the resurfacing and surface dressings that occur, as part of that maintenance programme occurs in the fair weather, fair weather parts of the year. Deterioration arose when there's ice, snow and excessive water on the roads. It is normal for this time of year and then it kind of gets picked up and put right later in the year. So it is not itemised as part of this 32 million in slippage. It's major, major contracts in terms of kind of junctions, et cetera, et cetera, that happens throughout the county. Gerry, in terms of the mental health, I agree. And we, we will have, it's going to be a major problem for us going forward. As I think my mental health gets affected by the fact that I have to stare at the same four walls every day. And it will affect an awful lot of people going forward and in many, many different ways, job losses, et cetera, et cetera. We will be making provisions in the budget, I'm sure, and I'm sure you will be as well. But the, we are, we're mindful of that and we're, we'll be addressing it. So fundamentally, I agree with you. On that, I think I've answered all the questions and I recommend it for approval.
Thank you. Can I ask cabinet members to move to the vote and raise your hands or not? Has you? One, two, three. Have we got everybody there? Yes, I believe we have. So that is, that is agreed, fully agreed by all members. Thank you. Peter? And the next item is also going to be with you. And if you could introduce the 2021-2022 budget and the 21-22-25 MTF strategy, this is an update or information.
Thank you, Chair. As you may kind of remember from the last cabinet meeting, we kind of put through the corporate board's proposals for the forthcoming budget. This is a further update in terms of the further information that's come through. And if you read through the report, there's things like 2.5 million of additional children's placement costs, 2.4 of one-off spending pressures that are Covid related, which will be refunded from the 10.8 million Covid grant of 2020-21. There is also a net impact on, the net impact of these changes is that we will be already kind of taking a tranche of the money that, from the precept. Now, as in the autumn settlement, in the settlement from Rishi Sunak, we have got the ability to raise the, an extra 3% in adult social care levy. We've already kind of made a call on that in some of this funding here. Also, bring in your attention, we have now got most of the tax from the districts and boroughs. And we was originally budgeting for a naught increase in tax base. And for the information that's come through, we're pretty kind of, it looks like it's going to be a 650,000 pounds increase in the tax base, which is better, which is good news in itself. We've also, the corporate board have also confirmed that they will be making 43 million pound of reserves to smooth the MTFs going forward and which will be part of our budget at the beginning of February. As I pointed out, this is really an update for more further information so that we and the different leaders of all the other groups basically can set that budget going forward. And it's an informative. If there's any questions want to be asked, I'm willing to answer them.
I've got one hand up at the moment and that's Gerry and then Keith. Two hands.
Yeah, it's not a question, just a statement, basically. No doubt, we'll all discuss it on the 8th of February during that day. But the one point of disappointment which I keep expressing as well everywhere I can is that we cannot keep funding adult social care this way. And we've all, everybody's talked about it for year in and year out, and it just can't continue really. And the sooner we can start to get around that subject in a more, yeah, in a better way, we can hopefully get some more secure funding in it. But it's just impossible to keep doing it like this. So not a question, Peter, just more of a statement and a gripe about, it's just bloody ridiculous. Pardon my French.
And one I agree with you on, as you know, we've been saying for a long And, and one I agree with you on, as you know, um, we've been saying for a long time that this is, you know, this is just not the right way to do it. And, uh, ever since the adult social care precept was introduced, it, you know, it basically is, is a problem, I think, that raises the money more in areas that perhaps have less demand on it. But, you know, this year was always going to be a challenging year to, to try to resolve that and get the green paper out and, you know, sure, again, we've still not got it. And to be honest, we've been waiting for a resolution on adult social care for, um, many, uh, many, many, um, administrations and many governments. So I think, you know, I hope very much that it will be coming over the horizon after the Covid crisis is over. Keith.
Thank you, Chair. Um, agree totally on adult social care needs sorting. What I want to talk about was, um, the risks and the things about population growth and this, and, um, council tax growth, because we always had in our budget every year a reasonable amount of growth because we had more housing, more population. And obviously migration's taken a massive hit this, uh, last twelve months and is probably quite negative. The Sunday Times reckons one point three million people left the UK in the last year. And obviously some unknown amount came back in, but with all the hit on places like Stratford, which towards economy and the University in Coventry, we, there must be some great uncertainty that we can rely on, um, a, a growing population for the next couple of years, uh, which then hits on to the whole financial plan. Um, and it also then hits on to adult social care because a lot of those people coming over from the EU did work in the social care industry as well. So, um, I, I, I do hope we've actually got some visibility on where we're going in terms of population growth um, and the impacts, um, some of it would be positive, some of it would be negative, um, on our council tax base. Thank you.
No more questions, Peter, so it's over to you. Um, statements, both of those, I think.
Yeah, both statements. Uh, the first one on adult social care, I, I agree with Gerry. Well, we've, we've sent numerous letters to the kind of Rishi Sunak and, and his predecessor in terms of we need a settlement and a fairer way of funding social care. Um, we're all in the same place on that one. And again, we're kind of confronted with the fact that we've got to raise the taxes ourself, which is not a sustainable way forward. Uh, not only that, the Covid has also pushed the fair funding review, business rights and devolution into the long grass as well. So we're, we're suffering from kind of indecisions from central government on all those issues. So, uh, I must point that out as well. In terms of population growth, Keith, um, the, the ironic thing about, uh, the stuff that's coming back from the districts and boroughs is that house, house building has, has kind of carried on at a pace. And, uh, um, there, there are still building houses. Uh, but what was the negative effect on our tax base was unemployment. As you know, people who kind of lose their jobs, uh, do, do not pay council tax. And the one, one real problem is not migration, but it's unemployment going forward. Once the kind of, uh, uh, we kind of get out of Covid and the furlough scheme, did say, uh, 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 kind of disappears. So that will be the one that's the problem going forward, not a migration of people in and around of kind of the county. We are still a good place to come and do business and we've all kind of maintained that element of, uh, Warwickshire and its growth and the place to come and live. So, um, on that, two statements, um, I would kind of ask you to kind of, your support on this paper. Thanks very much.
So, so cabinet, we've got, um, the recommendations printed on page one oh three. There are five, um, recommendations there, largely there to note, to note, um, but to support the creation of the commercial risk reserve, um, and to, and as printed. So I ask for your support for these and we are one. Eight points, um. Are we, have we got, I have a feeling we may have lost Colin, Colin, Colin Hayfield. Colin, if you, would you like to say, because I know you've got difficulty, can you speak and say your view? No, he can't do that either.
Action.
I think we may have lost him. He is still there, isn't he? Yep. Okay, uh, well.
Yes, support.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, it's a bit difficult. Thank you very much. Right, that is a full support for that, um, Peter. Thank you very much. So we can, your hands stand now, folks, and we will move on to item four. Item four is, is my agenda item and this is the council's Covid nineteen recovery plan. Um, so I would just say that, uh, we set the, we set the recovery plan up after we created the cabinet, uh, recovery groups, you'll remember. We created the, uh, original recovery plan back in last September when it came to cabinet. Uh, as well as the progress that we have had on this, uh, this particular recovery area, we have had, um, significant change in the pandemic since then, since September. And the council has had to reprioritise some of its areas of work and perhaps the, uh, areas that have been, um, considered to be held back have been put on hold until further on. We have, I, I will say, um, once again, on behalf of all members, I believe, uh, there's enormous gratitude to officers who have responded to the needs of our residents. Uh, they've created test and trace, they've created vaccination centres in line and in conjunction with the NHS, and they have responded swiftly and quickly to the emerging needs of the Covid uh, crisis that we have had to face and are still facing. Uh, we have responded to support schools very quickly and help out our children who have been struggling with education needs by the use of getting laptops out to them as quickly as anyone, I believe, has been able to. So there has been a massive amount of work in responding very swiftly to Covid. Uh, however, we have still produced our recovery report and this is an update on that situation. Um, it's been very intense for all council staff and, you know, there has been little let up. Uh, I know for many of us as well, I know, Peter, you've talked about how difficult it is to work from the same four walls all the time. This is, this applies to our staff in the, in exactly the same way. So it's been very challenging for everyone. So all I would want to do is recommend the report as printed, the update on our, our recovery plan. And I would like to ask you to consider the support for that. Um, and I do want to thank our staff for everything they've done. So I'm going to take Les first, then Keith, then Gerry, then there's, there's some more after that. Les, Keith, Gerry.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, um, support your, your, um, thanks to, to, to our staff, um, which have done a tremendous job to bring this forward in, in difficult circumstances. And indeed to all the members who contributed to the groups of which I chaired one, uh, that brought this, brought this forward. Uh, I think it's an excellent doctrine. The question I have, Chair, is distribution of this document. I think it is critical that we distribute it as widely as possible. Uh, and also to our partners, particularly in the health field, which I'm involved in. Um, all our partners are working on recovery plans. It'd be great to get this one out to them, um, because the last thing we want in all this recovery is, is lots of dedicated plans. We want to be in harmony as we all produce them. So I just urge we distribute this as wide as possible, Chair.
Thank you, Les. That's helpful. Keith.
Thank you, Chair. We really must remember the hard work done by all our staff. The county council has really excelled during this crisis. Um, but over the year, uh, and whatever goes on, we're going to have lost about a thousand people in Warwickshire as well. So there will need to be some form of remembrance and, uh, um, coming to terms with that. Um, going forward, I'm quite worried about the length of time it will be to get into recovery. Uh, and I worry that Warwickshire won't recover all at the same speed. Um, some parts of Warwickshire showing really good signs, yes, Stratford numbers are really coming down, whereas Nuthyton and Bedworth are really coming down very, very slowly. Um, and we, we learned today the vaccination centre in, uh, Civic Hall is, isn't vaccinating today. Um, and yeah, I really want to get the, the same speed of vaccinations going in Nuthyton and Bedworth. And I want it taken up. We've got this battle to get people vaccinated. So, um, it, we, we can talk of recovery, but we need to even up as well and make sure we all recover. Um, I'm really frightened. We're three and a half weeks, a month behind in Nuthyton and Bedworth at the moment. Um, and there's not, um, not always as easy to recover in Nuthyton and Bedworth. So I really hope that everyone pushes that we get it. The only bright side for the local economy is actually far more people are going to be hiding in the UK this year. It looks like going abroad this summer is still going to be out, uh, for most people. Um, so I really hope with a lot of the recovery is based upon the tourism industry in Warwickshire. And maybe the one good thing to do is, is focus on some of those, um, employment opportunities.
Thank you, Keith. Yes, um, I'll pick up on that afterwards. Gerry.
Um, thanks, yeah. Can I, um, place on record, thanks to all the staff and workers and everything? Certainly, um, some fantastic work has been done in the way they've gone through that. Um, but I do feel that fatigue is now setting in, uh, because this is potentially on for the rest of this year, uh, even with the vaccine. So I, I think people need to sort of think about that and, um, reflect on it because I think there's going to be some quite difficult times ahead, uh, just, just from that, that living point of view. And as Keith pointed out, you know, going abroad and all those things, which people think, oh, I've got the vaccine, that's it, great. Jump up and down for joy. Um, it's not quite that way. So, um, I think we need to, to, to remember that and, and I'm sure everybody does. On page one, two, three, um, talks about the reprioritisation, timescales and next steps. I am a little bit, um, frustrated, um, around the fact, the fact that the work on our new performance framework and the performance framework is going to be stored out. Um, you, you, you'd like from a, I suppose from my position, it's one mechanism of holding the executive to account and the delivery mechanisms. And therefore I do feel that this is not good enough really, uh, in that particular angle. And I know we've got Power BI and it was trumpeted as the best thing, very simple to use and very quick and adequate to use. But I do feel that the performance framework is a key element of actually reporting and actually going forward. So I'm not overly happy or impressed that actually that is being slowed down potentially. Um, it's not going to be up and running and some of the dashboards also are not visible to, to elected members. So I do think we could be doing a lot more than we are, uh, around performance. Um, and, and it's certainly an area I'm going to be looking at more and more closely. Uh, and as senior officers know, that I'm not happy about how it links up and how it works. It's just taking too long to be effective. Um, so that's my little moan about that. And the, the other bit about the document, I think it's a good foundation document leading forward. And there are some clear priorities which were put here together. Uh, and I know that you, Izzy, and I have spoken about, about this document. And I think that going forward, we ought to try and stay with as much of this as we can. Because this is a two to three year rollout really, how this is going to work. Um, I, I dare I say, elections, which is mentioned in the document, I talked about in May. Um, and you could have a new council which may come in and want to change things and I, I recognise that. But I do think whatever council comes in, we need to reflect on some of the key priorities around here and actually getting those, getting those, um, to be in, in the system now, uh, really. And that's all I have to say really, but apart from the, you know, the, the good work that everybody is doing. Uh, but I am extremely disappointed in the performance framework.
Yeah. Um, I, and Cam is next. I think Cam's going to come in on that exact point. And, um, so I'll pick up the point later when I close as well. Cam.
Hi, thanks. Thanks, Izzy. Um, Gerry, I absolutely feel your frustration because I'm at the same point. And I know when we were, um, going through the cabinet workshop, one of the key priorities for us at that time, September, feels like a long time ago, but we were in tier one, we weren't in tier three and we weren't in lockdown at that point. Um, but, you know, this, this was one of the areas that we really were keen to make sure that we get it right. And all I, the reassurance I can give you, the absolute assurance I can give you is that work will be done in the background on this. But what we want to do is bring something that's really, um, creative and innovative to you and to, and to the councils and this organisation going forward. Um, we are in recovery phase and what I also would like to say is many of the team that are in business support have been de, de-employed to, um, set up the lateral tests, to set up, um, you know, the PPE and et cetera. So please be mindful that whilst we want to do this work, unfortunately, we've had staff having to do other things which are more important at this moment in time. And I just want to just pick up on Keith's point about people not taking up the vaccination. Um, I don't understand where you're getting this information from, Keith, and I'd really be interested to understand where you are because there's one thing about reality and there's one thing about fiction. And I really would like to understand where you're getting that coming from.
Cam, I would say there is, there is, there is an element of, of certain areas where, um, we have got problems in people who are taking up vaccination. I think Keith is right and, you know, we will be able to identify those groups across, or, you know, those areas across the council. But it might mean that we need to message specifically in different areas.
We'll certainly do that and hence the reason I asked the question, Izzy. Keith's got the intelligence, then let's hear it.
We do know that already.
Okay.
If I may, Chair.
Keith, Keith, I'm not going to extend this. Um, I've got Helen next. She's been waiting.
Thanks, Izzy. Um, a couple of points. Um, page one, two, five is a mention of reviewing equality, diversity, inclusion in black, Asian and Arte ethnic communities. There was a, a task and finish group that was to come forward, if I remember rightly, from one of the, the full councils. Um, it's, it's been hectic, hasn't it lately? So it's slipped my mind as to when that, what, when we passed that and to what's going on with that. So if the officers could, um, remind me of, of how that's proceeding. Um, sorry, you're on, you're on mute, Izzy, sorry.
Sorry, I've got a squeaking puppy in the background. I'm trying not to, not to inherit it on you. Um, I'll get it sent from officers, the detail on that. We'll do that research, Helen, on.
Okay, thanks. And just, just to, just to thank the officers again for their hard work. I know they're working flat out. The other, the other thing I wanted to mention was on the priorities, the ten recovery priorities, I think are great. Um, I'm glad to see that we've got, um, education attainment. And now I've got my squeaking puppy in the background. I apologise. Um, I, I just wondered what we're going to do, they said. So it says by returning to learning, improving access to digital resources and tackling attainment gaps. Need a bit more detail on that and it might be worth having a couple of sessions with people, members who are, have been teachers. I know there are quite a, a number of us that have been teachers on all different sides. It may be worth us getting together to think how we can actually work with that along with the education team. But it would be good to thrash that out a little bit because that, I know from experience with my own daughter, who's just starting her GCSEs, that, that is, um, it's, it's going to be a problem.
Yeah.
It's as soon as they hear my voice, you see, they start to whine.
I know, I, I know. I think they're talking to each other, aren't they, Helen?
So I think so, yeah. I'll turn them off.
Yeah, lovely. Um, thanks for that. Uh, Les, you wanted to come in. I think it was, you're on mute at the moment.
Come on, uh, just to help councillor Atkins, uh, she did ask me a question at last council. Uh, I have a draft reply from officers before me today and I'll see that goes out in the next couple of days.
If you could, thank you.
That, that was this, I think we're muddling two things up there, Les. There were the two, there were the two issues. There was the one on health inequalities, which you were going to get back to me about, which was the one that was affected. And then there's the same one that went through actual full council.
I'll, I'll check with office, with officers and see if it happens, Chair.
Absolutely. And we did do, we did, um, set that up in cabinet in the summer, actually. So that is a, something that is worth finding out more about if we could. Um, right, so I'm, I've got no more, so I'm going to go back to the agenda, uh, item that we've got, that we're talking about. I'm trying to go back to the beginning. A couple of, uh, issues. So, um, Gerry, uh, I know there's, there's been a response from Cam about this, but there has been a, a massive amount of work that our, um, our area have been doing on this. And it has mean that they have had to reprioritise some of the work. You're absolutely right, performance is critical to. You're absolutely right. Performance is critical to us. We do not want to lose what we have been achieving by dropping it entirely. And behind the scenes, I think we need to make sure that that is dealt with as much as we possibly can. And I will talk to Monica and get that, recover that as much as we can. Keith, on, on the paper before us today, although much of what you did challenge us on is about the different, the different rollouts in different parts of the county, Nun Eaton versus some of the other areas. Arguably, I would say one of the best performing areas in the county has actually been North Warwickshire in rolling out the vaccine. They have been pretty outstanding and got there very quickly. This whole paper is about the business recovery of this organisation, about how quickly we can get back into operations. Arguably, the point that Gerry brought up and as well, how we are performing against our task out of the cabinet recovery groups that were held last year. So it is very important that we keep business as usual as much as possible in place. However, we literally cannot keep up that same capacity whilst we are dealing with a COVID crisis that we have upon us right now. And what is more important at the moment is to respond to the needs of our residents through this COVID crisis, that we try to drive down the infection rate and we try to get people as safe as possible, as soon as possible. And from that point of view, the sooner they are safe and they can get back into some normality, our economy will start to recover as well. So much work is being done, but we cannot be superhuman, no more superhuman than we already are being. And that means that some prioritisation has had to take place. And as soon as we can, we will get back on track and get our recovery into business as usual. So without further ado, I am going to move, move all to the agenda item recommendations. And this is on page 119. We're asked to note the progress and the proposals of reprioritising. So can I ask for your hands up if you want to support this, please? Thank you. I think that's full support. Is that right, Monica? Can we get that? I agree that. Thank you. That's unanimous, folks. You can bring that down. Right, get back to the agenda. Excuse me a moment. Just find it. Right, so item five we're on and Peter, this is going to be you. This is Treasury Management Strategy and Investment Strategy on page 175.
Thank you, Izzy. Normally, kind of when we do the Treasury Management Strategy Investment Report, it's generally kind of a, as per usual, few tweaks. But I think probably this could be one of the most significant papers we've got before us today in terms of the way in which we manage our money in, in the impending crisis and the recovery period and also the kind of the setting of the budgets that we've got next month. We kind of, we are looking at being more flexible in terms of accessing our funds. And because of the COVID crisis, we have to make sure that there's a certain amount of flexibility and liquidity in the access to these funds. And that's where we've kind of turned our attention. In terms of the borrowing side of things, because we're kind of, we're going to put a lot of emphasis on recovery and we're kind of putting in some extra borrowing for some projects that will be kind of a real core part of those recovery proposals. We have also kind of made it such that we can borrow more than what we've had in the past. So we're looking towards up to 500 million. This will be actually kind of be in net terms about 410 million of borrowings. Fortunately for us, because we've kept our borrowings well in check and compared with most, most authorities, our borrowings up until recently have been very low compared with most other authorities, which gives us that amount of flexibility and liquidity to be able to do that. The other aspect of it is that the lower interest rates would mean that we have to be more flexible in terms of being able to kind of move our money around, especially in kind of avoiding those investments where we've got what we call negative, negative interest rates. In other words, that we are paying them to look after our money. So the Treasury team have basically kind of got more flexibility to move that money to places where we can get a return, although it might be small. So they, all those points that I've just pointed out are a part of the strategy going forward and is probably kind of quite significant change in our proposals as we normally do at this time. It's generally normally a very boring paper to present, but this is more exciting and also shows that being flexible and having that liquidity and access to borrowings that we have now, that we can go forward and be ambitious about recovery. So on that point, I'd like to answer any questions. You're on mute, Izzy.
Sorry, sorry. I've got Gerry next, followed by Andy Crump.
Thanks, Peter. Yeah, an interesting read for those that like reading these sort of documents, I suppose. But yeah, no, there's an interesting position here. And I did note on page 196, the borrowing that the council is currently holds an over, overborrowed position, hoping to change. But I think that is a particular risk and does need to be kept a quite a close eye on going forward. And it does relate to that on borrowing, on that. The other part really was on the Treasury Investment Strategy, where it talks about some of the global impact and external fund managers and all the usual things. And I would hope, and even in the pension fund cash elements as well. And I would hope in the future, actually, and you probably won't like this bit, is that there'd be a paragraph or something which could be put in. Because if you get companies, which some of you may have heard of Blackrock and some of these other major, major global players in the finance markets, they're actually shifting their resources into climate change and into green economies and that particular thing. So the city and how financial markets are emerging going forward are potentially going to change. And that's reported quite widely now in the Financial Times, Telegraph and all the leading broadsheets and Bloombergs as well. So I would hope that our finance people could actually look around that and just make sure. Because we did have it a couple of years ago where they gave that a bit of emergence, but that seems to have disappeared from these reports now as well. So more of a comment, really.
Thanks, Gerry. Andy Crump and then Keith.
Thank you, Leader. I was surprised there's so many people to speak on this one because I used to do this in a former life as a job owner. And it's not exactly the most sexy of subjects, if that grammar is still, apologies if it offends anybody. Certainly, I think it's a great, a great report. It shows we've got flexibility to enable us to fund our emergency works, et cetera. And also the fact that the team have been able to consistently over the last few years, they're now to get outstanding returns on investments, which is again enabled us to maintain a well-balanced medium-term financial strategy. So yeah, just pay tribute to all the work that's gone behind and I'd like to thank the staff as well. Because I know they don't always get the plaudits because us accountants and investment people, we're known as the grey people. But we do like to occasionally praise now and then. So thanks to all involved. So well done.
Andy, thank you very much. But hardly the grey people today, in the pink, in your pink shirt. So Keith, to you.
Thank you, Chair. I always read and look at Treasury. It's really, really important. This is the stuff, if we get it wrong, the council actually goes broke and the government comes in to take us over. The Treasury Management is so important to get right. I noted Gerry's comment about us being overburrowed. Some of the districts are actually underburrowed as well. And I really think in terms of the public, we should be looking at working closer with our district friends and hopefully doing a bit more Treasury Management activities between the two. Because, yeah, one borrows money and the other's lending money and there's lots of issues there. And I am always alarmed when Peter Buckland says now's the time to take risks because I think now's the time to actually be careful. And so I think I'll probably ask the question, what risks does councillor Buckland want to take?
Thank you, Keith. No more, no more questions, Peter. So it's back to you.
Thank you, Izzy. Gerry, in terms of a close eye on the borrowing, if you look at item three, that the county, county council. Oh, yeah. No, it's item four. The county council requires a strategic director of resources to ensure that gross investment in non-Treasury investments does not near see the potential levels specified. It's already there in the recommendations. The green investments, I think it was last year's report where we kind of itemised specifically green investments. That intent is still there and it's also by lay date in, in the fact that we're kind of, the climate emergency stuff that was already kind of put into the ethos of Warwickshire County Council anyway. So it's there already. I must also point out that some, some aspects of the kind of the flexibility that we're putting into our investments is to kind of accommodate the Warwickshire Property Development Company, which is kind of going to be key to kind of our area recovery, especially in the later years of the MTFS. In terms of kind of risk, I didn't know, I kind of refer to taking risks with the money. But I assure you, to all the risk assessments in terms of what we do, and as you kind of saw when we kind of did that presentation on Warwickshire Property Company, all risks have been accounted for and any risk is properly managed. So we are, I am very careful by my very nature with kind of the taxpayers' money that I have the care of. Or the officers certainly have the care of because it is down to them who would look after us and make sure that we can go forward. And it is not my intention or ambition to be kind of having the problems of having a 14 officer called in if we should kind of be unviable. I must point out that one of the minister pointed out to us that 141 officers is basically kind of a, seems to be the reserve of kind of Labour-run councils at the moment. So we're kind of a well-run council.
So Peter, I'm going to move us to the recommendations, please. And these are for this agenda item which are on page 175. There are six recommendations which we're asked to see. And I'm not going to read you through them because I'll assume that you have got them in front of you and you have read. But I would ask for your, for your views on this. If you should support this, please do vote now. I think again, we're having trouble with Colin. Has Colin finally given up on us? I think he probably has. No, I think we will go eight, vote eight supports. So please, can I agree that with the support of eight cabinet members? Thank you. Thank you very much. For that, Peter, I'm going to move on then to the next item. That was five. So this is six. Again, Peter with you, capital investment fund. And this is for 2021, 2020, 2021 quarter four. For those of you looking for it, it's on page 253. Peter.
Izzy, the next one is the Capital Investment Fund. This is the CIF funding. And these are the latest awards that we're asking for us to approve. I'll go through them one by one. And the Lawford Road, Addison Road Casualty Reduction Scheme, which is a junction which has seen many accidents over the years and is on my patch. So I might have to declare an interest on that, but any local rugby member will know that it is a little bit of an accident black spot. And it's a mini roundabout where people come up to that junction. I don't know who's going to go first. So this is a scheme that's dear to my heart and I'm glad to see it here today. The next one is the All Electric Bus Town Project led by Coventry City Council, which is kind of, we're kind of being kind of part of. Again, this is a wider funding from the Department of Transport for a scheme that is circa 125 million in total. We're contributing 1.4 million. And also this is an exciting scheme and it's linked into Coventry. The final one is, no, not the final one, the Stonely Business Park Southern Accommodation Bid offer. This is a small amount of money for us in terms of a contribution, but it's a fantastic return on capital for us because the bridge itself will cost in excess of 12 million, but it will be built at the same time that HS2 is built itself. So we're getting an access from, on the Stonely Business Park to create, so we don't lose the employment allowed by that railway going through it. So it's a, it's a really good investment for us. Finally, there's the Warwickshire County Council is the, what's the name of the scheme? The RNIV Centre Ash Green, Warwickshire County Council. It's a complete Warwickshire academy, that's it. This is extra funding that's required to complete the conversion of this site that we bought last year. Kind of, once we've got the experts in to look at what was required into converting it, we've kind of had the extra costs to meet. So the costs include the resulting major adaptations to be made to the school, changing it from school for children with physical disabilities and school for children who are physically able and either have social, emotional and mental health needs. We're also, it requires a further allocation for the County Investment Fund of 3.85 million. Some of the extra works are a new sports pitch provision and multi-user games area. A redesign works for the science room, food tech room, design and technology room. And then there's the inclusion of fees, including design and professional fees and surveys for pre-construction work. This all adds up to the 3.8 million. I must point out, this is in Bedworth, not Nun Eaton. This is, so there's a little bit of a kind of slipping, the kind of narrative there. This is in Bedworth, in fact, on the border to Coventry. This is a fantastic scheme. It's, and will kind of save the county an awful lot of money and can provide better provision for SCND children going forward. And by any stretch of the imagination, this is a fantastic kind of investment for Warwickshire. So I think that's about it for the CIF funding. Will it to ask the questions?
Yep, I've got a few. So Geoff Clark first, followed by Keith.
Thank you, Leader. Yeah, questions or statements? Obviously, I welcome this investment at this time in Warwickshire. This sort of investment is absolutely essential and identifies that Warwickshire is here to proceed and progress and we're open for business. There are a number of, number of areas within this that give funding to highways schemes, one of which you mentioned, Peter, in relation to the Stonely Business Park Southern Accommodation Bridge, which will bring many benefits, particularly around Stonely and the issues around the longstanding issues of congestion through, through the village of Stonely and the grade two listed bridge over the riverside, hopefully to the east of the village, which hopefully this will facilitate the economic expansion by improving the opportunities around the area. And the access will help address those, those measures for the residents in that area. The other one I was going to mention, if I may, Leader, is I totally welcome the additional funding for the buzz, the electric buzz.
Yeah.
Wasn't the right one? Yes, there. So I've got my notes and you've got my notes mixed up there. Is the benefits for Warwickshire. I mean, this is an absolutely fantastic scheme for Coventry and Warwickshire, which we're working together with Coventry on. The new technology is going to bring some 300 buzzes into Coventry and Warwickshire's network on the electric basis. But benefits in Warwickshire will be the new technology improving the passenger's experience. The complements our commitment to carbon neutrality. The aspiration of the county council when it declared the climate change emergency in 2019. It contributes to the AQMA. It supports also the economic growth in the area. And hopefully will increase the vitality of the urban centres as well to enhance the community involvement and the social inclusion that I come about and helping to combat the loneliness. These, all these will be benefits that will come about from these load carbon, well, electric buzzes. So I do welcome that, that. So I do welcome that, that aspect of it as well and the money that we're putting in to support in, to ensure that those services can be delivered throughout Warwickshire. Thank you leader.
Thank you Geoff, yes, I absolutely fully concur. I think it's a really exciting project and it might be something that as we progress and, and it develops, it might be worth having a member seminar on it to really understand the rollout and what this might mean for the future. I know we've had one or two on electrification, but this is a tangible step forward and I think it might be well worth having it. So I've got Keith followed by Heather.
Thank you Chair, when we get vaccinated and it all's clear, we shouldn't just have a seminar, we should have a ride on the electric bus into Coventry. Because it really will be a new norm for people, particularly in Bedworth, down the Coventry Road towards Exeter. The pollution down there is dreadful and it's not just the electric buzz, it's engaging with the buzz operators. So actually, we have a longer conversation about joining up Coventry to Warwickshire. Far too often, the Coventry bus is stopped at the edge of Coventry and we need to actually make an integrated transport system. So I, I do not understand why this hasn't got 10 out of 10 on the scoring for sustainability. I, I can't think of anything that is more useful than cleaning air quality, integrating buzz services. It ticks every single box we should be ticking and yet it only gets eight out of 10 on sustainability. So I think there's some questions to be asked as to why it doesn't score higher because it is actually a marvellous thing. And me and Jonathan are really pleased after introducing the buzz motion two years ago, that the officers have worked so hard and worked with Coventry to get such a good joined up score system. I must actually ask about the sustainability score because they're absolutely crazy.
Keith, Keith, look, let's, I'm quite happy, this is recommended to go through, the money will go there. If you want to talk to the officers about the recommendation score, I would do it separately from today.
That's okay, but I wanted to ask about, we've got other projects on here like the Stonely Bridge, which scores higher 8.2, which is a road project. Can we make sure that road project includes capacity for cycle lanes on that bridge? Because we've got the Bermuda Bridge project later, so if you scored it so highly, we do need to make sure that it's actually a proper, fully sustainable project and not just a road project. And the pair centre is very good in Bedworth. Thank you.
Heather, thank you. Heather, are you with us Heather? I think maybe that was a historic, Heather, there you are.
No, I am here, that's, just undoing all the buttons. I, I really wanted to speak on this as the climate change champion for Warwickshire. I, I feel this is an absolutely beautiful project for us to be taking forward in Warwickshire. I want to thank the officers that have worked on it. It is amazing that of the DFT assessed 19 expressions of interest from local authorities. And we were one of only two to win through as a Coventry and Warwickshire cross boundary proposal. And so I think we do have to pay tribute to the officers that worked on this, so really well done. I think the, as people have expressed, the air quality implications for our primary towns in Warwickshire, that includes obviously Eton, Bedworth, Leamington Spa and Rugby is immeasurable. So I think it's great that this is going forward. I also think the plan around charging points and the use of charging points also for other electric vehicles as they come forward will be really helpful across Warwickshire to improve the network of charging points as, as we've got lots of work going on on this. So really wanted to welcome the project and thank the officers.
Great, thank you Heather, and I know Geoff wants to come back, but I do want to say a small bit about this. Because Peter will remember, we have been on this campaign for electrification for, oh golly, gosh. Eight years I would think it is, something like that, isn't it? When we first started that and we got Quinton Wilson in, didn't we? To try to drive this forward and put the pace behind it. So it takes time to get these things motivated. It was probably about five years, four, five years ago, when we had a demonstration of the first electric bus. It was a Volvo bus and we had it come into the county, do you remember Geoff? Yes, Marcus was there as well and that was on quite a hot summer's day. And the, 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 the real benefit is the, the clean air, the cleanliness of it. You could, you could drive it into a showroom and it would leave nothing and it would not pollute the air. And I think the quality that that will provide our residents is absolutely unmeasurable. It will be so much more pleasant an experience as well as a healthy experience. So this is really tangibly getting involved in this happening within our county. So really excellent, something that we've been ambitious now for, for, oh gosh, between five and eight years altogether. I think the first germ of it started eight years ago and five years ago, we started moving on to buses. So a great step forward, thank you on that one. Geoff, you wanted to just come back, I think in response.
If I may leader, just in response to Keith's question actually, I'm not sure whether he's fully read the report. But on 4.2 in relation to the Stonely Bridge, it does actually identify in there that it must be built to enhance specifications that include dedicated pedestrian and cycle infrastructure without this potential to deliver the sustainability that we agree would be, would be lost. So that's.
So it's already built in.
It's the requirement and it's in the report Chair, thank you.
Thank you, right, so this is the capital investment fund, so to Peter to finalise.
Thank you Chair, as of kind of most, most of the questions were actual statements. And when it comes to kind of electric buses, I was reminded several years ago when I was in Sheffield, where kind of every other vehicle was a bus, that you could basically kind of, because of the emissions from the buses, you could very near taste the air. And when you kind of recognise that a diesel powered bus with a less efficient nature can basically kind of pollute that industry quite significantly. I think electric buses are a big improvement for air quality of the reason where we're kind of installing them. The problems have been kind of in terms of getting the infrastructure and charging points etc to get these things. And it takes a lot of time and effort to get it into place. But this is a fantastic scheme and will kind of pay dividends and make it an enjoyable process of getting on a bus. So I'm kind of excited about that one. The rest of my errors are stated and I stick your approval.
Right, we have on page 253, we've got five recommendations for approval and I would ask for your vote, members please. Are we all there? I'm waiting for the nod from Heather. Heather, are you, let's see, are you having a spot of trouble? Heather, I wonder if, oh.
There we go, there we go.
Yes, thank you very much, you can, we've got unanimous support for the report, Peter, thank you. Thank you all, and I'm Colin getting back into us. Right, moving on to agenda item seven. Yep, the, this is the Revenue Investment Fund 2020-2021, Peter.
Thank you Chair, it's me again. Two small items of money that should have come through this, one is for the, where are we? It's the Sustaining Prevention Fund and it's an information and advice project with the project sponsor being the Assistant Director of Business and Customs Services. This is kind of a, kind of points potential social customers and their carers to a point where they can access web information as to the services that are required. This, where are we? Access information, advice or range of community services to improve their wellbeing and find out about their activities in their communities of potential benefit to them. How can them remain independent and lead healthy and happy lives? It's a mere kind of £169,000 and can achieve an awful lot for delivery of services in this region. The second bid is for a small not sum of money of £72,000 for the Great Crested Knut licensing, licence project. Now, in my whole career in council, if I was to write a book, I could dedicate a, a, a chapter to the Great Crested Knut. I've been involved with numerous projects where the Great Crested Knut has cost us enormous amounts of money. Mainly because of the monopoly that's held by the English, the people, I've forgotten the name of them now. But the, this enables us, it misses out one of the middlemen and reduces our costs when we have to do kind of Great Crested Knut surveys and reallocation, relocation of knuts from sites. For a kind of a species that is supposed to be kind of very rare, it seems very abundant in Warwickshire. I remember when we did the Junction 12 project, there was knuts everywhere and it cost us £125,000 to relocate them. The most funny one was where we had an archaeology kind of a survey on one site. They dug a trench, it rained the next couple of weeks, the trench filled up and the knuts migrated into it. So we had two problems all on the same site as a result. But this will enable us, this small investment is enable us to reduce those costs on, on major projects where we have to deal with Great Crested Knuts. So I welcome this small investment as well. On that basis, I'm willing to ask questions.
I've got no one here, no one to speak on this. Peter, so it's back to you for the recommendation.
Thank you Chair, I'm glad to see that everybody's, nobody's that greatly interested in Great Crested Knuts as I was. But I'll forward this for, I'll seek your approval for this paper, thanks very much.
Thank you very much, so it's rather caught me by surprise, so I haven't got it in front of me, I haven't got the recommendations. But if you can, please vote on this now. So I've only got four people at the moment, is that right? No, no, I've got five more.
We've got nine.
Nine, okay, thank you very much, thank you Peter, you've got unanimous support for that. I'm going to move then on to eight. Now, we have a change, a change of performer. Peter, you've done your bit now for the moment. So I'm moving to Geoff Clark on the Civil Parking Enforcement Contract 2021. And this is item eight, page 273. Thank you, over to you.
Fair enough, mute, thank you leader. Yes, thank you Peter for all the preamble, for all the support previously. Members may be aware that our civil parking enforcement contract comes to an end on 31st of October 2021. After this date, we would need to appoint a new provider for on-street parking enforcement, which would commence on the 1st of November 21, 2021. This combined, combined with the back office processing of penalty charge notices and the processing of permit applications and the distribution of the permits through a virtual process, which was already been previously agreed. Combined, we would need to future-proof this as well. The parking enforcement process, as we move forward, and be ready to adapt new statutory regulations and enforcement as are already in place in London and Wales, that may be rolled out in other areas of the country. And we need to future-proof our contract when we, when we let it to make sure that that's covered. That will be done by probably Dave Ayton Hill and his team, leading a project team to decide with the new provider and then appoint accordingly through the statutes, through, through our statutory procurement processes. There's a lot of words to get your tongue around on this one. The overall value of the contract means that we do need to seek agreement from Cabinet in order to start this process. An initial cost in the exercise has indicated that bringing the service in-house would cost the council an additional £2 million and therefore the options, this option was discounted. Working group have undertaken some initial soft market testing to identify whether suppliers who are able to provide the requirements could, could consider. Be able to provide, sorry. As I say, there's been some soft market testing. And the other thing I would point out as well, as I mentioned earlier, in 1.8 it identifies that we have been in contact with the DFT in relation to, sorry, 1.7 DFT in relation to North Warwickshire. And they're coming on board with CPE in, in North Warwickshire. We're waiting for the DFT's consideration of that at the moment. But this contract would also need to include the addressing North Warwickshire's CPE teams as well. So with that said, leader, I would do the recommendations as set out on page 274, is it? It's 273, I beg your pardon. And I'm happy to take any questions, you're a mute leader.
I'll just check if anyone wants to come in before we move to the recommendation, but I don't see anyone coming in. So I think you are actually, we will go straight to that. So Geoff, I think that, yep, he's voting already, so I think we'll go with the vote, thank you. Were we missing anyone there? Were we missing?
You've got everyone.
Everyone, thank you all, that is unanimous support for all that. Right, getting through it, again, this, I have to say, this was another big agenda. So I'm very grateful to you all for the heavy reading that you've gone through. Moving on to item nine, which is the Bermuda connectivity, which we've had a public speaker on. And I'm going to ask again Geoff, if you could introduce this paper please.
Yeah, members will be aware that this has been an ongoing project for a number of years. It's focused on the opening up of the Bermuda Bridge, which has already been identified as being a good cost benefit ratio. Whilst the increase in requirements due to further value engine, sorry, not value engineering, due to further engineering in relation to the gas barrier and the delays in the award of the contract and COVID implications that we've had around those delays. This would deliver 1.3 miles of highway to link between Western Eton and Grif. And as, as I say, it's reached a significant milestone now, but the contract has, has gone up since it was originally considered in 2018. The request in the report is for an additional 1.459 million. There are a number of benefits that will come about because of the opening up of this area. Partly economic recovery, shorter journey times, the connectivity on the cycle networks and the reductions of congestion in the area. So there are a number of benefits from taking this scheme forward. I'm happy to take questions and I do appreciate the concerns that were raised earlier by Michelle Condecor. And hopefully we'll be able to address those as the scheme is developed, thank you Chairman.
Thank you, I've got Keith Condecor, thank you, and then Claire Goldby.
Right, for the points of doubt, I'll declare that Michelle's my wonderful wife at the start. This is actually a truly dreadful scheme, it is 1.3 miles, but it's almost, yeah, sort of how many hundreds of thousands per inch? And it's been overtaken by events. We have above a plan that will develop the Arby Estate and provide an alternative to this route. It's probably zero cost to the taxpayer. So when that happens, be it five years or 10 years' time, there'll be a strong reason for actually closing this new road you built and returning it to a low traffic neighbourhood. It's clear we've got £1.5 million of noise compensation to pay out, which highlights how unsuitable this is as a high throughput route. And although I don't want the Arby Estates to be developed, if it happens, this, this cut through, which is, I say, highly unsuitable, will be redundant. So I, I So I do not understand why we're pushing through with this, and definitely pushing through with it without analysing the new opportunities. Coton Arches has been done since we approved this. It's six years old, so can I ask Geoff and the Cabinet to defer this until we have a thorough look at the whole road network and what sustainable transport we need? Because there are better options, cheaper options, and even after it opens, there'll be a campaign to close its through traffic once the Arby Estates has got an alternative route. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Keith. And of course, I do remember you were against the Coton Arches at the time, so it's interesting now how successful you say it is. Claire? Have you got you, Claire?
Yeah, can you see me okay?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, it's nice that the Arby Road is now being put forward as an alternative route because that was my doing with the government inspector, and it was received not very well at the time by the person who's just spoken quite highly about it. Anyway, the original costs of the Bermuda Scheme are £3.7 million with a benefit-cost ratio of 5.9. In the 2018 Cabinet Papers, it was stated that an updated scheme would actually cost £5.9 million and have a reduced BCR of five. Then we were told at the detailed design stage, the cost estimate had increased to £14.6 million, which exceeded budget tolerance and wasn't deemed acceptable. The project should have been shelved, but instead it was moved on to a process of so-called value engineering, and I'll use that term loosely, which to the man in the street is basically taking bits out of the scheme to make it cheaper. Unfortunately, the bits that were taken out were arguably the bits that were most useful and helpful to residents, like the resurfacing of the whole of Bermuda Road, which is crumbling from the substrate up, and the changes to Heathen Road, Bermuda Road junction. These are major, major things that have been taken out of the scheme. The project is actively seeking to increase traffic through a residential and in some cases zero-traffic area by an average of over 4,000 vehicle journeys a day, and the costs are now over £10 million. And there's still absolutely zero included to improve the major residential area junction on the route at the top of Bermuda Road, which can't cope with the access and ingress of traffic it has now. Just taking it out of the project doesn't mean you won't have to do something about it. It'll probably happen on another project with separate costs so as not to damage the BCR of the bridge project, but it will have to happen. I've spent money out of my delegated budget to install bollards at this junction for pedestrian safety because vehicles, especially the larger ones, regularly mount the pavement. The bollards themselves are knocked over regularly. To say large vehicles won't use this junction anymore, is that something I've been told, is also not correct. Should this bridge open to all traffic, it will become a major thoroughfare, and of course they will. The new BCR, when you include the economic benefits, reduces to six compared to seven. At one point, some of the supposed economic benefits used in the BCR calculations, there were 4,000 jobs, would be created by opening this bridge. It's still noted in today's document that this bridge will open up employment land. This is categorically not true. The bridge does not open up access to anywhere currently inaccessible. It joins two elements. It's not a new route, as it keeps being portrayed. This is another reason why I have no value, no faith in the BCR calculations, because they aren't based in the actual reality of the situation. You model in a vacuum, you don't model human behaviour. At one point, a leaflet about this bridge was sent to 30,000 homes across Nuneaton. I've never heard of this council taking such an approach to what is effectively a local highways project. Even so, the consultation results came back, as been previously mentioned, that although the majority of people think traffic in the area is a problem, this project was wholly unsupported by the majority of people. I can safely say that this view hasn't changed. What has, however, changed is the Arby Link Road. This is the road that I, amongst others, was saying from the start should be the primary highway focus as a direct route from Heathen Road to the A34. I was constantly told it would never happen, however, it is now a requirement. It's been put into the Nuneaton and Bedworth Borough Plan as a major modification by the government inspector in order to make the plan sound, and I have to say, I take responsibility for that. I also understand that the point of several million pounds has already been spent on this bridge project, and therefore, in a view by some, it can't be stopped. However, I would suggest that you defer making any decision on this today and look at the project through a different lens. Make it an active transport corridor instead, much less invasive works required, greatly reducing the cost and the impact, and improving the impact on the lives of those around the route. In keeping with the council's core values, it still keeps within capital spend, we have finance for it, so it won't move over to revenue spend and cause a problem. Concentrate on the Arby Link Road and getting the existing Collie Street, Heathen Road, Greymore Road projects underway, that's already been agreed. Put an access to Bermuda Park Railway Station off Coventry Road to encourage foot passengers rather than expecting people to ride to the station using the bridge, which won't encourage a major increase in passenger numbers. The land of Coventry Road is now in the Borough Plan as employment land, so it's not dependent on the bridge, by the way. It's totally feasible.
Claire, I wonder if I can ask if you can get to the end a bit?
Yeah, yeah, I'm near there. These, again, are a lot less expensive ways to yield a good outcome. And no deferral to re-evaluate this project will in itself have a cost involved, but it won't be as much as the £1.5 million extra you're being asked for now, and it could yield big savings to the public person, the overall project. I have no doubt that if you continue pursuing this project as it stands, and it and the required ancillary projects like the junction improvements and road resurfacing works will indeed end up costing the £14 million and possibly more that has already been deemed too much, not to mention the impact that it has on the people I represent.
Thank, Claire, thank you very much. That is a very full report. And I've got Geoff Morgan, please.
Thanks, thanks, Izzy. I completely disagree with what's just been said. I know this area, I'm very familiar with it. I think having to wait five or 10 years for a road to appear as part of a Borough Plan where, I mean, you're starting from absolute scratch, we've got the budget, we've got the plan, we should go ahead on this, it'll be a benefit for the area as a whole. Thank you.
Mute it, mute it, Izzy.
Oh, sorry, Peter Butler in now. Thank you, Geoff.
Thank you. I mean, this project has been about for quite a while now. It can't stand from even when I was in there. But I remember Bill Olner, and every kind of five minutes, he used to come up to me and basically said, Pete, you're going to make sure this scheme goes ahead. And he lived there all his life, and he understood the implications of actually making sure that this, this scheme went ahead in terms of making the connectivity across either side of the A34. And Bill was an avid, an avid supporter of this scheme and wanted it to go ahead. So even in just in memory of Bill Olner, I kind of, I give absolute support to the scheme, and I think this will make a significant difference to a lot of people's lives either side of that road, and also for the economic progress either side of that road. So I've got no hesitation to support this, this actual allocation of money.
Right, I don't see any other speakers on this. And I would just point out, too, that we did have a public speaker, Michelle Condecor, who spoke on this matter. So, you know, it is, it is a matter that has raised a lot of different views very strongly over many years now, and Claire is the local member, she's very strongly representing her residents. I do recall, too, Bill, like you, Peter, strongly representing his residents as well on this matter. But we've had very strong views, and it's not party political, this is just a matter of Nuneaton issues that are so important. So I do ask people to consider everything that is being said as we move forward to the vote, and I'm asking you for your views on the recommendations that are printed on page 285.
Can I come back in, Leader?
Oh, sorry, Geoff. I completely forgot that. Yes, of course you can, yes. So, sorry, hold, hold your thoughts.
Thank you for that. Yeah, as you rightly identified, it has been a greatly contentious issue through a number of years now. A lot of work has been done in relation to that, has been identified by councillor Goldby. In the meantime, there's been further works done in relation to bringing this project forward. What I will say is, the cost benefit ratio is still at 6.0, which is a good cost benefit ratio, and will help deliver the benefits for the area. The other point that was made in relation to the link road, I'm a little bit confused with councillor Condecor, because on one hand, he's telling us we're not building houses, then on the other hand, he's telling us we're putting a road through and building more houses. I'm a little bit unsure as to what's, what's, you know, which, which is real. What is real is now, I'm afraid, and the people of Bermuda, the surrounding areas need this link road through, and I would ask the Cabinet to support the recommendations as set out, and let's get the project moving. Thank you, Chair.
Right, so we're moving to the vote, and I'm asking you for your views on the recommendations 1 to 4 on page 285. Please vote now. That's unanimous, Geoff. That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much, all of you, for your input, whether for or against the item. It's been an important debate and always was and always will be. I'm going to move us then to agenda item 10, which is the Better Care Fund 2020 to 2021. Just a reminder that this is being held under an urgency procedure, and we have had the approval of the overview and scrutiny chair for that, and I'm sure Les, you will, when you, when you make the, when you present it, you will explain the reasons why. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Yes, indeed, as you say, we are here under the urgency procedure. The reason being, as though this is a 2021 project, the national policy framework for this year, 2020, it was only received in December from the Basel B, and so we're signing off our plan late in quarter four. And this is a critical part, the Better Care Fund, and it underpins much of our social care offer, so it looked at health with rehabilitation, integrated community equipment, care of support and dementia, and indeed our present COVID response, where we are doing some excellent work with our hospital social care teams, with fire and rescue on our hospital-to-home services, and training and support to providers. So a lot of critical work going on, if you like, for the day job and for COVID, but this is, as in previous years, Cabinet has to approve this, as indeed has all the three CCGs, and then tomorrow morning, subject to our approval today, as Chair of the Health Loan Being Board will hold an emergency meeting and sign it off as well, so that we can get the matter dealt with, and this is outlined in, in 5.2 of the paper before us. There are four recommendations before us, but the critical one is to approve the plan and to approve our council's contribution of £14.6 million to the pool budget of the total of £58.2 million, again, outlined in paragraph 2.3 in the report. And we need to do this to continue our existing schemes, and all the schemes we are doing in this meet the national guidelines, so we've no problem with there. But we do need to support this today in order to sign any section 75 agreements in February before the year end and do all the necessary financial work. So I'll move as laid out, Chairman.
I've got Gerry Ruudhaus next, and Keith Condecor after that.
Thank you very much. Important report, and recognise it's urgent because of the timing of certain other individuals not in County Council control bringing this forward. But yeah, no, Les is correct, this is some valuable stuff in here, and this funding is really, really needed now to, with the COVID going forward. And I do look interestingly at paragraph 2.3 in the funding sources, of course, and it'll be interesting to see how that develops going forward, once we have the single CCG, of course, and how we do that as well. But no, the projects that are going forward, as can be seen, and the schemes that are supported, certainly with COVID, post-COVID, are really needed, so it's a welcome move to get the money out there.
Thank you, thank you, Gerry. Keith?
Thank you, Gerry. Yes, it's really vital we get this moving, and it's really annoying that these things get delayed by government taking time to decide. One thing it would be useful to get some guidance on is if there's much cost pressures and inflationary pressures on this, or are we fairly sure this can all get staffed up and go ahead? Because we are in a difficult place with COVID, and it's, it's so important we get more people engaged in working in care. I don't know how the pressures on the service are going to cope. Thank you.
Les, no more, hands over to you.
Yes, thank you. Yes, totally support what Gerry has said, and it goes back to his earlier remarks, we'd all rather this sum of money be issued to us in our base budget, so we can do a, know it's there and do the very best for the people that, that, that needed. To respond to Keith, basically, we've been doing all this work this year anyway, and recruiting has not been a problem. In fact, over the course of the COVID, we have recruited about 100 additional care workers, 200 additional care workers with the support of our, with our officer team, and they are employed in the care sector, but we are well aware of the pressures on the care sector and doing all we can to support them with funding, and we've had some more recent funding from government, which, again, we are using to support our care sector. And all funding we've had to passport through to the care sector has been delivered fully on time and promptly, so there's been no delay without the additional funding that we have provided ourselves, support with PPE and other needs that the care sector had. So this is one stage of the process, and I recommend that we support, Leader.
Thank you. Yep, that's, that's good. So we will move to the vote. This is, of course, under urgency as well. So can we support or not those recommendations, 1 to 4, on page 285? We've got unanimous support, Les, so that can go forward.
Thank you, everyone. I will help my meeting tomorrow and sign it off.
Excellent, thank you for that. Yeah, so good news. So the next item is item 11 on page 297. This is the much-heralded K2L cycleway, and we've, we've had, Richard has already spoken on it, and I know I've got Sarah Bowden, I've got John Cook, who want to speak on it as well. So, so over to you, Geoff, to introduce it.
I wasn't sure whether you were going to go straight into the speakers there, Leader.
Almost. I, I know they are bursting at the seams, so.
Thank you, Leader. Yes, obviously, this, this is a, again, extremely topical and concerning report, particularly in relation to Leamington to Kenilworth, and I'll turn it the other way around just for the sake of alteration. I suspect K2L is before my time, I must admit, and probably it's been alphabetically, I suspect, but I'm not 100% sure as to why, why it was that given that, that title. But anyway, it has helped in bringing this project forward. What I would say, Leader, it will provide five kilometres of dedicated off-carriageway cycle route connecting Kenilworth and Leamington, or Leamington and Kenilworth, along the A452 and the B4115, and this will include a new pedestrian and cycle bridge over the River Avon at Chesford. The Warwickshire Capital Investment Fund has already agreed the £4.749 million to this project, and the scheme will have to be delivered in three parts. Firstly, an off-carriageway shared pedestrian and cycle route along the eastern side of the A452 from Leamington, Leamington Spa, near to North Leamington School, playing fields, and then to Berwick Roundabout, excuse me. The second section will continue this route across a new permanent pedestrian and cycle bridge, crossing the. a new permanent pedestrian and cycle bridge, crossing the River Avon and the floodplains in that area. Again, between Berwicket and the Ashar Road, four one one five Ashar Road. The third section will be an off-carriageway cycle route running to the north of B four one one five, which will connect to Glass House Lane in Kenilworth via the Bridlewell and Rocky Lane. The report sets out the next step for the development, Leader, of this project, from the feasibility design to construction, and requests the authority to proceed with the required statutory applications that are going to be required in including land negotiations, planning applications, completion of the feasibility and detailed design studies, and also land acquisitions. It does form part of the wider cycle route network, and it's important that we help to bring this scheme about. It demonstrates the County Council's commitment to encouraging cycling, the modal shift within Warwickshire. And it is, as I say, part of over eleven million pounds of spend that we got allocated for cycleways throughout Warwickshire. What I would say in relation to questions asked earlier, and I mentioned, and I know it started in two thousand and six, it's disappointing that it's frustrating that it takes so long to deliver some of these schemes. But the current expectation of construction is that they will take place between twenty twenty two, twenty three, and twenty three, twenty years. Depending on the successful completion of the required statutory procedures that we have to require to go through. If there is any further problems, a report will be brought back to council. If during the development, any significant scope, programme or budget changes are identified, Leader. But on that basis, I would move the recommendations and the report to members. I'm happy to take questions and I'm seeing some people already indicating that I do appreciate Mr Dixon's support earlier in the meeting, Chair. I wasn't sure whether you were going to take this as a starter item, but here we go. Thank you.
I have to say, I think this is fantastic. I'm very excited. The fact that it's, you know, off-road is just, it makes it a really worthwhile cycleway too, and it'll be great, really great. But I will leave that for others who are more directly involved in it to say. And Sarah, then John, and then Keith.
Thank you. Can I agree with you, Izzy? I think this is an incredibly exciting day. I can beat two thousand and six. I've got a photograph of me standing on the side of the four five two in nineteen ninety four, before I was the county councillor. And it goes back, people calling for this cycleway back to as far back as nineteen eighty six. And so that's thirty five years. It's been long, long, long planned for, fought for, sort of desired, really. It will make an amazing difference to be able to cycle safely between these two towns will make a massive difference. As has already been said by Richard, this is not a good place to ride a bike. It really, really isn't. It's not a very wide road. I know the speed limit along it is forty miles an hour. That means the report says there's thirty thousand vehicles a day travel this route. There are buses, lorries and all sorts. So it's not a good place for a cyclist to be. So this will make a massive difference. I think we all appreciate what a complicated process and scheme this is. I mean, it sounds easy, doesn't it? Just draw a line on the map between Kenilworth and Leamington. The different land ownerships, the fact that there isn't a proper or decent bridge that can take a cycleway across the river, and all the rest of it, make it an incredibly complicated scheme to deliver. I would like to pay tribute to all the people who have campaigned for this over many, many years, local councils, both in Leamington and in Kenilworth, cycleways, other amenity groups, residents, individuals of all campaign, signed petitions, gone on, probably cycle routes, cycleways and rides and all sorts of things to bring this scheme to fruition. I know we have to wait a little bit longer for it to actually come to fruition. To be honest, as long as it's there and it's voted for today, then that's absolutely fine. Why it's called K two L, I have no idea. It's always been.
I think it's alphabetical.
It could be. It's always been called K two L. I can remember a meeting saying, why wasn't it called L two K? No, it's always been, it's always been called K two L. And I think the other thing that we'll do is actually it will engage people in leisure cycling as well. Not just going to work or going to university or going to school, but actually a leisurely cycle ride to Kenilworth from Leamington or vice versa. You know, it will make it so much more feasible at the moment. And I think you'd have to be either very confident or perhaps a bit mad to even think about cycling on this route. And in fact, all the cycle routes suggest that you shouldn't cycle along this way. So I do hope the cabinet will support it today. So thank you to all those who've campaigned for over many years. Thanks to all the officers who I know from meetings have worked incredibly hard to bring this scheme to fruition, because it's not an easy job. And so I'm really, really grateful for all the work that's gone in. And I really do hope that the cabinet will support this today and let's see a start being made. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. And moving on, John Cook, on the K side of the L, K two L.
I was rather fascinated to hear. Firstly, thank you for allowing me to speak at such short notice. Firstly, I would just say to Sarah, as a former advertising agent, I would just tell you that all the advertising people would have called it K two L because it runs off the tongue more.
It does. Yes, it does.
That's the reason. I do think it's important to do say something, as I seconded Geoff Clark's proposal back in nineteen. And I also, I don't want to prolong this, because I know you've got a long agenda, but I do have a personal interest in this insofar as some of you will be surprised to know this, but I was actually married at the time when these were started to be talked about. And my wife used to, she worked at Warwick District Council, she used to traverse the A four five two on her bike. She was really into biking. In fact, when we got engaged, her engagement presence to me was a bike. So that just goes to show what it was about. But on, well, fairly shortly after we were married, she was cycling, and she actually got knocked off her bike. And she wasn't seriously injured, but I think it did put her off going, riding her bike on that particular journey. So I know you will be here pleased to know that we are still on very good terms and I speak to her quite regularly and I will update her about this when I speak to her next. I obviously welcome the recommendations. Kenilworth welcomes the recommendations. Any true cyclist will welcome recommendations. And I would like to thank all those who spent a lot of time working on this. And like Sarah Bowden, I look forward to actually seeing it come to fruition. Because let's put it this way, this one's been a long time in the making, so let's let's hope that we get there sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Brilliant, John. Thank you very much. I've got Keith then Peter. Keith first, then Peter.
Thank you very much, Chair. I chaired the Cycling Task and Finish Group. This is a real top priority to get these sort of inter-town routes going. And Kenilworth to Leamington is just the right distance for cycling. I mean, I cycled in Eton to Leamington and then into Warwick, but I do not expect that to be the name of the route. But it's really good to get these towns joined up and they drive cycling not just between the towns, but actually you get radio routes. And on the map, you've got some blue dashed lines for potential routes in Kenilworth. And we really need to build those as well. We need to do this as a stage one. So I hope the portfolio holder will actually take on board getting the extra linking future routes going as fast as possible. My only concern is a bit of noise about delays. I know we've built no cycle routes last year, no cycle routes this year, probably won't get them started till next year. So we've got a big backlog. So I do hope the design services, and if Geoff can comment on this, actually get staffed up enough so actually we can get some good speed on the ground once the land ownership is done. Because I mean, like the mood of bridges being a decade, we need this to move.
Peter.
Thank you, Chair. This is probably kind of the flagship cycle route for the county at the moment. For two big reasons. One, it's kind of cycling from Kenilworth to Leamington on existing routes is a dangerous affair. And we needed something to kind of bridge that gap and make it safer cyclists who want that connection. Two, it's significantly in its amount of technical problems in terms of new bridges, et cetera. So that's the reasons why it costs four point seven five million. Not to mention the kind of the land acquisition issues as well. So although in terms of financials, which is where I come from, there is a certain amount of risk in some of the kind of details further around in terms of implementing this. And it might actually kind of cost a little bit more if we're getting further problems down the road. But there is a reassurance from my offices that we kind of do our utmost to basically deliver this in the time allocated and kind of keep a close eye on the pressures financially. So but I'll just point out to you, there are risks involved because of the technical difficulties in kind of putting this cycle route in place. But it is, it's a good day for us in terms of delivering this. And it's been a while coming, but all good things kind of take time, especially when they're technically difficult.
Yep. And you've quite rightly pointed out that it is a complex, as has Sarah. It is a complex one. Doesn't mean to say it's still not a huge ambition of all of us. And we will see how that goes in just now when I'm asking you, oh, sorry, Geoff, I'm back to you, Geoff. Slap my wrist.
Oh, did you go again?
Yeah, long day.
Not a problem. I welcome the members' involvement. I welcome the public's involvement and I particularly welcome the officers' involvement in bringing this scheme forward and developing it and bringing it to fruition. They've done an absolutely fantastic job and they are really keen to see it developed as soon as possible. So I'm sure in relation to any delays, you know, they will be endeavouring to make sure that there are any delays that may come about will be at minimal. But as has been indicated, statutory requirements have to be adhered to. We have to work to them and sometimes they can be a pain when you're wanting to get on with a scheme and deliver it sooner rather than later. And we're keen to get this scheme open and delivered and open. So with that said, and I thank the support of local members as well in making sure that this comes to fruition. I would move the recommendations as set out, Leader. Slightly different, approves development of the Kenilworth to Leamington cycle project and authorises strategic director for communities and resources to take all the steps required for the implementation of the scheme, including, and then it's A one to five and B one to three, two, one and two, beg your pardon. So it's slightly different than the recommendation. The recommendations are there and I would ask members to approve that, those recommendations. Let's get on with it.
So we can vote now?
What if I forget me on the screen? There you go.
Yeah, we've got everybody. Thank you. Unanimous approval. And that is a great step forward for Warwickshire. Really well done. So thank you. Thank you all. Fantastic. Right. Hands down and swiftly moving on to the next item on page three hundred and three, which is item twelve, direct payments approval to tender, and it's Les to introduce it.
Yes, thank you, Chair. After the excitement, we'll come down to the business. So this is to move out, to retender our direct payments suppliers, which are due on the first of September. One point two describes, we have two suppliers at the moment, one doing employment support and information support and full guidance for our customers who have a private assistant to manage their affairs. And one for actually recruiting the personal assistants as well. We have done some market testing and we've had six providers come forward within that marketing testing, showing interest in these contracts. And we also have spoken to our direct payment stakeholders group as well. Because the object in moving to a new contract, which will be for a term of six years, is that it will be a flexible contract, so that as the demands of our users change, we can change. And also, as the market changes, post-Covid and everything else, and also as our direct payment card system we've introduced moves into the market, we need to be in a system where we can use this contract to deliver the very best services we can for our people that use it. So we just have permission at this stage to go out to tender and that will be on on a flexible tender basis, as approved by our officers. Our move is laid out, Chairman.
Thank you very much. I'm just looking to see if anyone wants to come in on this. Yeah, not quite as popular as K two L, I'm afraid. I'm sure they're far more important to those people in receipt of those direct payments. So, well, actually, that's prompted Peter. There you go. Peter.
It wasn't me. It's a sticky hand.
Was it? Okay, right. Well, Les, I'm going straight. It is a very important thing to all of our, all of our people who are in need of direct payments. And very important that we get it right. So back to you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I mean, just, as you say, it's very important. The contract is worth four hundred and seventy one thousand pounds a year. So over the life of the contract, we're looking at nearly three million. And this is a great service we give to people that need it. So our move is laid out, Chairman.
Thank you. And that is, as I said, on page three hundred and three, if I can ask for your vote, please. That's unanimous. Monica? Yep, good. Thank you. Unanimous, Les, so that can go ahead. Thank you. And then we'll move on to the next item. We've not got too many more before the end of this. So penultimate item before we go into confidential matters. And this is the Warwickshire Fire and Rescue Service Strategic Direction of Property. So it covers two portfolios. And I'm going to start with Andy Crump and then I'm going to go on to Peter Butler. So, Andy, could you introduce this, please?
Thank you, Leader. I noticed it's aged before beauty on this one.
It is. It is. My thinking.
And unlike yourselves and Helen, I promise not to be interrupted by a puppy. But saying that, in a parish council meeting once, I was interrupted by a snoring guide dog. So that was quite interesting.
Put you in your place.
Yeah, definitely. So, yeah, today's report is asking the cabinet to support the proposed future direction for the development of Warwickshire Fire and Rescue's property estate in alignment with the County Council's property strategy. Lots of important reasons why. And these principles will also tie in and inform the IRMP that's going to come to Cabinet in just over a month's time, in March twenty one. So lots of important reasons why we're doing this. And basically, you can see the principles that we'll follow when we're looking at our future fire and rescue assets, set out in section three. That's the really important bit, the three point two, the bits in grey. So, yeah, we will ensure that the safety of Warwickshire communities will be paramount when exploring future options for estates. We will take a one-council approach to use our Warwickshire Fire and Rescue assets in conjunction with the wider council's assets. And again, one of the reasons we're doing this is to operate, optimize operational capability, service performance and agile working. And I won't read the other three, that's self-explanatory. So basically, the report, this is what the report is about. It sets the framework for future decisions around our fire-related estates. And we'll be looking with other initiatives to work on, including closer working with Blue Lot Collaboration, One Public Estates, and obviously, long-term plans with the Warwickshire Property Development Company. And again, the report sets specific proposals which are currently underway, such as a plan, training facilities at Kingsbury, Leemaster and Stratford. And that was part of my commitment, once we decided not to go ahead with the Southampton project, that wherever we provided as an alternative to that project would be just as good as, if not better. And those training facilities at Kingsbury, Leemaster and Stratford, I'm confident will meet that target. So the majority of the projects referred to aren't at the decision-making stage yet. So the majority of the projects referred to aren't at the decision-making stage yet, apart from the training facilities. And will come forward to Cabinet as separate reports. And again, with Cabinet's approval today, the report will set the scene for those projects to be further developed. And again, adopting the principles set out in the report, allowing us to think longer term, fitting us for the future and making sure that public safety, again, remains at the heart of any decision we make around the estate. So done for the best of reasons. Again, with public safety, we're right, that remains at the heart of any decisions we make.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go to Peter next for his part on that. And then I've got Gerry Ruudhaus and Keith Condeco.
Thank you, Izzy. This is kind of the first of many papers that will be coming forward in terms of the kind of a property strategy for the County Council. As anybody knows now, in many meetings I've had, the properties of the County Council have been rethought due to the COVID crisis and also kind of implementing services kind of for the future. In this case, this is about implementing a kind of a fire and rescue service for the future. Warwickshire County Council is one of the fastest-growing counties in the country. And sometimes you end up being with a service in the wrong place. I'll draw your attention to the strategic principles and kind of, Andy kind of pointed out the first three or four of the principles. But the final two, five and six, are where I'm coming from in terms of strategic working with our properties. So we will work with partnership to public services to create opportunities for shared space. And part of that one is where the Kieran wants to move the headquarters of the Fire and Rescue into Shire Hall and which will make them part of the Warwickshire family and feel part of the Warwickshire family as well. And in the other one, we will strive to ensure best and sustainable use of our resources in line with the County Council commitments on climate change. And that also is integral to that part in that. What I'm very keen to do is to make sure that the Warwickshire Fire and Rescue Service is in the right place to deliver the right services to everybody in a very mean, efficient and timely manner. And attendance times for fire and rescue is one of the things, key issues that they always talk about. And if you're in the wrong place, those attendance times can be compromised. So this is all kind of geared up around that in terms of making the service more efficient and keep the Warwickshire residents safe. And so that's where we're coming from.
Thank you. I'm going to move to questioners. So this is Gerry Ruudhaus, followed by Keith. Gerry.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of points really. Recognize that this asset management is all part of the bigger picture. And of course, will help with the overborrowing position if we go way back in the agenda on the investment strategy and the rest of it. So it's part of a planned programme to address that. So fully realize all that. My plea is to Kieran and to the portfolio holder, that as you go through this process, can you make sure that elected members locally at all levels are involved in the particular processes as things happen? Because this doesn't always happen with Warwickshire County Council. And therefore, I'm calling on you and the Chief Fire Officer to make sure that it does. And that includes districts and boroughs as well.
Thank you. And Keith, would you like to come in?
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask a bit about the Nooton and particularly Nooton Fire Site because the Nooton Fire Station is on a very big site. And we talk about retaining it as a community fire station model. And there's a lot of land there and it might be worth thinking outside the box as to, yeah, like the Royal Mail Sorting Office is being moved. Yeah, is there some really good use that would really welcome being in a not-too-out-of-town location? Maybe Aston Royal Mail if they'd like to go at the back of the fire station because that'd be an ideal place for them and it would actually be good use for land.
Right, I think that's all the questions for now. Who wants to take it? Who wants to go first?
I'll come in person. I think Keith's question actually ties in with Gerry. Because one, I certainly definitely agree that local members have got a great insight on the area and can come up with different ideas. And so, yeah, we're more than happy to engage with local members, particularly yourself, Keith, in Nooton and all the other Nooton members as well. And I think Gerry knows that during my meetings, I speak very often with the councillor Bode and, you know, inform her and the other members there, Maguire from the Labour Group as well, of what's going on and consult them. But yeah, both very valid points, consultation, definitely. Local people have got unique local knowledge. So yeah, more than happy to add into that knowledge. Thank you.
Super. Peter, is there any more to add or are you happy with that?
Happy with the response from Andy and the move for approval.
Thank you. As on page 307, you've got two recommendations there. Can I ask for votes, please? Are we there? Not quite. What are we missing? Keep your hands up. And then we're just waiting for, we're waiting for one now. I think it might be the portfolio, no, the portfolio holder's there. It's Geoff Clark. Geoff Clark. Are you there? He's no longer in the meeting, so that's the eight out of nine. Eight out of nine. Okay, thank you. We will go with approval for that. Thank you. Right, getting there. Next item. I hope, where is it? That is a minute. It's Geoff Morgan, anyway. Here we go. It's on page 315. It's targeted youth support. Geoff, delighted to have you present.
Thank you very much. There's no doubt that around the county, youth services have struggled over the past decade or so. But we are now in a position to do something about that in Warwickshire. I've made the point before that we're investing £12 million overall of additional funding for children and families over the next couple of years, covering 29 projects of which two are for youth work. In this paper, we are looking at one and a half million, £800,000 of which will be a fund to provide grants to community and voluntary bodies and £100,000 for training. Essentially, what we're proposing is to increase capacity in our targeted youth support team by adding more youth workers and creating a fund for community groups around the county to bid in for youth-targeted activities. We anticipate the bidding will be opened through windows at various points in the year with bids from £20,000 to £30,000 over the 24-month period. There will also be help from WCC staff to help the groups submit successful bids. Those of you wishing for more detail can find that in the appendix of the report, which makes it clear that our target young people are in the 11 to 18 age range, particularly those vulnerable in danger of risky behaviours, be that county lines, knife crime, alcohol abuse, teenage pregnancies, et cetera. This is not ping pong in the church hall. Our youth workers are used to working in schools and on the streets and car parks where young people gather together. Young people themselves will be central to the design and running of the various activities. In addition to the fund, we were setting up a youth alliance, a partnership for working with other groups around the county. And that should help. It should help things run smoothly. I therefore ask my Cabinet colleagues to support this project, to endorse the targeted youth service approach and ask that children's scrutiny takes this on its agenda and accepts an annual report with an evaluation so we can see how things are going. This is a good scheme targeted at some of our most vulnerable young adults and is particularly up our sight at this point in our third national lockdown. So our move is laid out.
Yeah, Geoff, thank you very much. An important report. I've got Pam Williams next.
Thank you, Izzy. Yes, and thank you, Geoff. I think it's a very important scheme. I think it's important that we support the young people, particularly coming out of this pandemic and particularly this particular age group who I think will be adversely affected by the pandemic and by the lockdown and by the lack of school openings. So I hope that everybody will support this scheme and support our young people and our vulnerable young people in our community. And thanks.
Thank you, Pam. Gerry.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to know if Geoff could confirm, is the money one-off money over a number of years or is it ongoing revenue built into the base?
Shall I answer? Shall I take that now, Izzy? Gerry, thanks for that. Good point. At the moment, it is over the next two or three years. It is, you know, sort of temporarily, temporary funding. If the project goes well, if the evaluations show that it is effective and if resources permit, I very, very much hope we'll be able to build this into the base in the future.
Okay. I don't see any more hands, Geoff. So it's really back to you for the recommendations.
Thanks then, Izzy. In that case, I asked my colleagues to endorse the support as laid out on page 315. Two recommendations. If I could have your support now, I'd be most grateful.
Yep, right, we are.
Put my hand up, Izzy, but not working.
Yeah, no, it is up. I think we've got unanimous support, Geoff. I'm delighted to say and delighted that this project will go forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so hands down, folks.
Apology, I missed on the last item, I just dropped that.
This is always the challenge. Right, I am then going to, I'm going to move to the exclusion. I'm not sure whether I can find the, that members of the public be excluded from the meeting as mentioned below on the grounds that their presence would involve the disclosure of exempt information as defined in paragraph three of part one of schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972. Can we agree that those words? Seven, I think, or eight, four, nine. I think, are we there now, Monica?
One more.
One more. One more. Colin Hayfield. If you are, it's fine. Yeah, eight's fine. We can move on. So a majority support for that, for those words. Thank you.